Also in your packet, you will see pictures of our students who participated in the MEKO Director's Conference led by our MEKO Director Renee Smith. It was a Youth Forum Conference of Loving the Skin That You're In, an intentional session to discuss reclaiming identities as MEKO students. It was a wonderful event by all reports, and our students supported themselves extremely well throughout the event. And again, I appreciate Ms. Smith's effort in that. Next item, just to make you aware of, relates to a survey that went out today. I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Norv Banal just to catch you up on that.
After speaking to the Policy Committee, we sent out a survey to all Braintree families and staff about the possibility of switching three half-days, late start days. So three of our half-days would be as they are now, and three of our half-days would start late and end at regular dismissal time. The survey went out this afternoon. So far, we have 296 responses, and pretty even split at this point.
So this is information gathering. Obviously, this is really an effort to determine if there's any interest in really examining this and in any real way. So it's just a solicitation of feedback from community members about would they be at all interested in moving some of our half-days to a late start as opposed to an afternoon start?
Can you just give me the time period? Like, do you have a, I haven't seen a survey.
Yeah, I mean, we did approximate times, they're not exact, but we said that, for example, right now, the elementary's, a regular half-day is 8:45 to 12:10. If we did a late start, elementary would be 11:15 to 2:50. So they're going late.
Okay, thanks.
So once said, survey is complete, obviously, we'll bring it back to Policy Subcommittee, share those results with the Policy Subcommittee, determine what, if any, next steps we can come up with after that.
From the chair. When does that survey due?
We sent it out today, and actually, we didn't put a due date on it, but I would, by next week, we should have a pretty good sense.
Okay, thank you.
And can I ask one more question? What, why did this transpire? Why did this?
So that, a bunch of neighboring districts have started to do it, and there's been positive feedback for multiple reasons on it. And so we wanted to see what the Braintree community thought of it. The Blue Hills Regional does it, and obviously, many of our students go, not many, but some of our Braintree students go there. So that's one of the schools.
Thank you.
Continuing on, also in your packet, you will find the latest update from the South Shore Educational Collaborative for your meeting pleasure, as well as the latest MASC bulletin. Again, informationally, you will find improved minutes from policy and ed from November 16th of 2022. You will also find a notice from Town Hall about the Mountain Luther King Peacemaker Award. That is this Thursday. The recipient this year is Kerry Dougherty, who many of you know, and who has done outstanding work throughout the community over time. So I encourage anybody who can attend to attend the event. And then the last piece that you will find in your packet related to this is the Town of Braintree Lunar New Year Festival sponsored by the Mayor's Office. And that's Sunday on 1/15 from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Braintree Town Hall. So I wanted to make you aware of all of these things. I have to answer your questions, my head's bothering.
Comments from the committee? I'm very excited about the Peacemaker Award, obviously. I'm very good friends with Coach Kerry, who has done a lot of volunteerism in town for our special needs community. So very clear about that out there. So congratulations to her. Right, moving on. Gifts to school. Again, I'll read them all off, and I will ask for one motion. All gifts to school. Bay State Textiles gift to schools totaling six checks totaling $247.75. Braintree Public Schools Math Department gift to schools for $100 from the Massachusetts Society of CPAs. Manadequith School Kindergarten Center gift to schools $1,330 from MSKC Gear fundraiser. Braintree High School Athletic Department gifts totaling $6,993. $4,273 from a VHS swim team fundraiser. $2,720 from the VHS soccer team fall season. South Middle School gift to school totaling $3,997. $3,157 from the Scholastic Book Club, and $840 from the Washington DC trip. And then East Middle School gift to school totaling $7,023.96. Two deposits totaling, sorry, two deposits totaling $7,023.96. $40 for yearbook from the Washington DC trip. $25 from East Theater Guild donation. $2,372 from grade six field trip, and Shutterfly $4,386.96. Motion for approval?
Motion second.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemaryr, a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That is unanimous. Oh, I just wanted to mention too that Mr. Lynch, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Devon, and me, of course, obviously, you're not in attendance tonight, so I want to bring that. Okay, moving on. From the superintendent's staff. Back to you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Chairperson Heager. So annually, we have the pleasure of giving some awards to some of our highest achieving students, and that is the case this evening. Tonight is the MAS 2022 Student Academic Achievement Awards. Those of you who might be new to this, it is an award for academic excellence, given annually to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. This evening, we have two students who would like to recognize, and although they might not love it, I'm going to ask one at a time for them to come up to the chair, and let me say a few words about who they are and what their accomplishments are. And with his, his support, I'd like Andreas, if you could come sit up here, please? Brett, yes, sir. This is Andreas Toias. Andreas is our number two student in the class on track to become our salutatorian at the end of the year. And I just want to just highlight some of the things that Andreas has been able to accomplish while a student at Braintree High School. His guidance counselor describes him as an assertive young man academically. He has taken a rigorous course of study that has included almost entirely Level One courses and advanced placement courses. He currently has a GPA of 4.7 on a four-point scale, which I'm not sure how that math works, but maybe you're not familiar with that. He is number two in a class of 413 students. His GPA and his grades put him onto the National Honor Society, the Spanish National Honor Society. He has a love of history and government, and is part of the National Student Leadership Conference and International Diplomacy. He holds a seal of biliteracy in Spanish and Greek, while I still continue to struggle with English. He is very involved in his church, where he's part of their youth association and leads their community service efforts. He is the president of the National Honor Society. He has been a member of our mock trial team for the last four years. He is anticipating majoring in physics in college and is part of our science team and our math team. And again, according to Ms. Toias', guidance counselor, Andreas is truly a great young man, and she has worked with him and enjoyed every single moment of it. So this evening, I present to you Andreas Toias, our number two student in the class and one of our recipients for this award night.
Excellent. Nice to meet you. Writing one with you?
Yeah, my mom is right here.
Would you like to introduce her?
This is my mom, Anna.
Congratulations, Mom. Yes, exactly. Wow, very impressive resume. You know, your academic achievements, your leadership roles, your volunteerism, you know, you make us very proud here. So I don't know if anybody has any comments or they want to ask Andreas any questions. What do you see yourself doing post-Braintree High? It sounds like physics and science future.
Yeah, so I want to go into physics specifically. I want to go into research, and that's what I think so. Maybe continuing post, post-undergrad and go into grad school to do research.
Have you already settled on a college or no?
Well, I haven't heard back from a few yet. We're still waiting on that. We're still waiting on that.
Is there, do you mind, is there a leader in your own clubhouse in terms of where you'd like to go?
Well, of course, there are leaders. We'll see.
Good, good, good attitude. Yep. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I was very impressed with the language skills and, you know, math team was always impressive to me. The students team as well, very good. So congratulations. You worked hard for that.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So this is a certificate that is being presented, Certificate of Academic Excellence to Andreas. Having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents is hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence and witness whereof the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of schools are here unto affixed, and it's signed by our superintendent, Ms. Lynch. So let me give this to you. We look forward to your speech at graduation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Andreas. Our, our next recipient, who I'll ask to come have a similar seat is May Ying. Good evening, May. Again, most of the information I get, obviously, I get from their guidance counselors, and May's guidance counselor talked at great length about May's accomplishments. She is currently the number one student in her class, again, of 413 students. She was, May was picked for the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership State Seminar previously. She has been one of the leaders of her class from early on, and has done a multitude of volunteer work, internships, and become a student mentor. She began her AP coursework her freshman year when she took AP Statistics. As a sophomore, she was, she chose five of the most advanced courses offered, but also took AP European History and AP Chemistry. I apologize. She has earned all A's so far with a 4.8 GPA. At the end of the year, she has completed, end of the junior year, she had completed seven AP courses, and she is currently taking six more. She is the National Honor Society Secretary. She is a National Honor Society Member, a French National Honor Society Member, an AP Scholar, and a National Merit Finalist. She founded the Asian Student Association, which only started with a few members, but now apparently has over 150 members. She mentors a Chinese middle school student and tutors English to students. She is also a musician, an intern at the South Shore Conservatory of Music, and volunteers at the Thayer Public Library. She is a student leader of the math team at Braintree High School, and has taken online courses at MIT in Computer Science and Programming. Getting to feel badly about myself.
I was thinking about my app, oh my God.
She's done a great deal of volunteer work, including Women's Foundation of Boston and South Shore Conservatory Chamber Trio. She is bilingual in Cantonese and English. She plays the piano flute and violin, has played at both Carnegie Hall and Lincoln Center. And so I present to you May Ying, number one student in our current class. Congratulations, May.
Congratulations, May. Would you like to introduce your family members that have come with you today?
Yeah, my dad, my mom, and my sister is on the phone right now.
Welcome. Welcome. And again, what are you, what are your future plans?
So I was fortunate enough to be accepted into Harvard Early Action. So now I'm considering maybe going into biomedical engineering, something of that sort.
That's amazing. Good for you. Makes us very proud. Again, your, your resume.
I got nothing.
The resume, both resumes were extremely impressive. And again, the academic achievements, the leadership roles, the volunteerism, that, you know, the well-rounded, it's just, yeah, it's mind-boggling. So you make us very, very proud. So again, another certificate for you. And we look forward to your speech as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair. Do we have your, oh my gosh, I just lost my train of thought, but you did say Harvard you were going to. Has that been your goal throughout school? Because you've been involved so much since you?
Yeah, so all my family is back in Hong Kong, so I just really wanted to make my grandparents proud by, you know, attending America's best university.
They were successful. Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So am I. So am I. It is amazing what young people can accomplish. Obviously, not only with the support of their families, but which are integral, and this level of success for any individual, but also, it also is testimony to the staff that work with our students on a daily basis. But some people take full opportunity of it, and both of those people are here tonight, so I appreciate it.
You don't need to stay. We have quite a bit of business. I'm sure you have a lot of homework to do. So you're welcome to leave at this point, if you'd like to leave. You're both welcome to stay, if you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's purely up to you. Again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
A group, a group decision.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations to the parents as well. Good job.
Good night, guys.
You too.
Okay, so moving on to program studies.
Thank you again, Chairperson Heager. So this evening, we have Dr. Scully from Braintree High School to provide an overview of proposed changes to the Braintree High School Program of Studies for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Good evening, everybody. Each year around this time, we come before you with some proposed changes to the program studies. I'll say that this year, our changes are smaller in number than in the past several, and that's based on the work of many of the directors and some of whom are seated right here behind me today. They've been summarized on the slide. I'll just point out a couple. There are three major ones. I'm going to talk about the second and third first. The second bullet discusses several changes to the business department. Many of these are, if not clerical in nature, a little bit more housekeeping. So for instance, a couple of course titles that have been changed. Couple of courses that are offered only at Level Two, not Level Two and Level Three, based on how the instruction works in those classes. And then also a course that has not run in a number of years, and just sort of cleaning that up, removing it from the program of studies. The final bullet, the third bullet, is about placement of science department forces in grade sections. That's a result of, of changes that we've made that have now phased all the way through in terms of the sequence of biology, chemistry, and physics, which now all students take in order, and so that has been clarified in the program of studies. The top bullet is, does discuss a new course, which is very exciting, Introduction to Digital Journalism and Publishing, listed as a new one semester elective in the English department. This is a, not a companion course, but sort of a corollary to our broadcasting program. I think many of you have probably seen the Broadcasting Program. They're responsible for a number of features. They run the Braintree Four on Wednesdays that really serves as the information source for the school, and also a number of sort of special productions along the course of the year. This course looks at news gathering in the same way, but will offer it, offer the output will be more in sort of a traditional journalism mold. However, traditional journalism in terms of, you know, picking up the Herald and wrapping fish in it afterwards is kind of a thing of the past, since paper newspapers are, you know, less prominent these days. So obviously, as the name implies, digital journalism and publishing will have a focus on how you generate and communicate news in a digital format. So, so it's like having a, you know, what, what some of us might remember is having the school newspaper as a course, but again, the output that they're going to be creating will be up to date. There are some other changes that every year, Mr. Garofalo and I will read through and say, like, how did we not notice that misspelling? Or that's in the wrong column. So there's always a few editorial changes like that. Those are the only three major changes for this year.
Any questions from the committee? I have a few questions and a few comments. I'm always excited to see additional electives. This is great. Personal finance. I think every student should be taking personal finance. I know we've talked, we've talked about this in the past. I'm very excited that you've expanded credit for life to all students, all seniors.
Yes, yes, all seniors.
And the personal finance class. And I understand why you've dropped it from Level Three. But again, how many kids have the opportunity to actually take the class?
In that personal finance class, how many sections this year?
Actually, five.
Five sections? So there are five sections of that course through business this year. I think the other, the other factor to consider is that in several senior statistics courses, there's a unit takes up the most of the last quarter. I'm asking Ms. Miller because she supervises these courses for the last quarter. So a number of seniors take, get hands-on financial information.
As part of that.
That course, yes. So I can't say that every senior will take a course on that, but the opportunities are there in multiple places. Sometimes students are not taking those courses because they are, you know, taking advanced placement math courses in another area or sort of in another field. And then, as you mentioned, we have expanded credit for life to be the entire senior class. And I think our, our goal for that program this year, we expanded it out to everybody, and our goal this year is to really take a look at the learning activity that leads up to and follows from the day itself, so that it certainly won't be an entire course, but it'll be a little bit more of a reflective process and activity for those students.
So again, I think it's, you know, critical, you know, what's your credit score and budgeting and, you know, just personal finance. How do you write a check? A little bit of the stock market. So again, I think it's a great class. It's wonderful to hear that it's a, that it's a part of other classes, so that everyone gets a little, a little bit of it. So again, it's just my two cents. I think it was the best class. My daughter took it. I think it was the best class she took. And that's just my personal opinion on personal finance. And again, an additional elective, I'm always, I'm always for additional electives. That's all that I had. Any other questions from anybody else?
So can you tell me if there is any possibility of the tutorial courses that were dropped being put back in? So we had, we had two math classes that were to help students keep a pace with the curriculum and the math standards. So those, any possibility that those will be?
Well, we take it. Not, not this year. That's not one of our recommendations for this year, but I think we do feel strongly about the, one of the reasons that we feel we can generally go without that, although I will talk about a specific math course in a moment, is because of the level of instruction and the quality of instruction in the classes that we do have. So we keep, we keep track of potential failures. We try to notice them early. We try to do a lot of support for that. This year, at the start of the year, we had a after-school program to support students who were changing levels for a particular course. And we also have a course that is aimed specifically at students who either may be new to Braintree High, or, you know, in other words, transferring in, transferring mid-year, or transferring midway through their academic career, career specifically for math, to sort of get them up to speed, that then, from that point, they transfer over to the course that's in sequence.
Yeah, one more question.
Certainly.
And what about increased lab time in science? Is that a possibility? We had, used to be that you had an extended lab period this month, and that's no longer the case. Is that something that would you're looking at?
Not at this time. That's a change that we brought to the committee perhaps two years ago. Is that right? Two sequences ago? So two years ago, when we brought this, these changes forward, one of them was to change how we, really, it's a question of where and how we taught labs, so that we had a separate lab period, which was not necessarily given by the instructor in that class. And so while it resulted in an overall reduction in time for that entire course, the science courses are now consistent with all the other courses at the school in other departments, and students are able to generally take labs with their instructor. We think adds to the momentum and the, the ability to sort of vary the amount of time, to sort of be a little bit more flexible with how that's delivered. The one exception to that would be for our AP courses. Several of those have a double lab period, double lab period multiple times. So we do feel that those students get the lab time that they need.
But not the rest? They, they, you don't have that, those double labs for general student population? Okay.
Yeah, that was one of the changes that we brought a couple of years ago and changed that and sort of folded them back into the regular course. I think one thing to keep in mind as well is that the schedule that we operate under now, which is about seven years old, gets older.
And so do I. Mine actually be eight.
Okay. Has longer periods, and so that's part of the factor that went into that thinking as well. That makes it a little bit easier to set up, to run an activity and to take down, rather than if you go back far enough when we had a 45, 47-minute period.
Yeah, how long with periods now, rather than 50?
Fifty-eight? They're going to vary. Fifty-eight? First period varies, lunch period varies, but if you take 58, I go with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I know this is the first reading, but I'm fine with approving it tonight if, unless anybody else has any concerns or any other questions or would like to table this until the 23rd and move over. I mean, the, the changes are not significant. Does anybody have an objection to approving this evening? Is there, is this time critical anyway?
We do start scheduling at the end of the month.
So yes, it is.
Earlier, well, earlier approval is helpful. We could certainly, you know, go another two-week cycle, but it allows us to make the changes in the booklet.
Is anybody, is anybody opposed to approving it tonight or voting on it? I shouldn't say approving. I can't assume that everyone's going to vote for it, but we all, everyone's okay. Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the Program of Study changes for the 2023-2024 school year? I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemaryr, second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everybody.
Coming right back at you.
Yeah, I know. I know. Moving on.
Moving on. Next up, we want to circle back on some standardized test scores, and for that, I'm going to turn it back over to Assistant Superintendent Banalza.
So early in the fall, we gave you a summary of what the MCAS score specifically looked like, but you had asked for a deeper dive into what that data looks like. So we have Fetsy Clifford, Anthony Garofalo, Courtney Miller, and Rock Roberts here to do a deeper dive into not only the MCAS data, but also the SAT, AP, and ACTs.
Hello. Thank you for being here.
Hello.
Good to see you both.
Having a good time.
Good to see you both. Thank you so much.
So we'll dive right in. Overall, in the presentation, we're going to talk about specifically MCAS comparisons. So we broke the data out, looking at just the grade three through eight span, and then also the grade 10 data. So we'll look at that for math, ELA, and science. Specifically for ELA and math, we have a nice comparison from 2022 back to 2019, which was actually the last time that we had a quote-unquote "normal" MCAS administration. Then we'll talk about, or Anthony Garofalo will come up and talk about the SAT comparisons between state and national results, and then our AP multi-year trends. So that's all we have in store for you this evening. Just to set the stage, we did want to go back and just frame the thinking in terms of really what has happened, specifically as it, as it relates to MCAS. So in the 2019 to 2020 school year, that's when we had the closure for the pandemic. So there was no administration of MCAS that year. So we do not have any Spring 2020 data. 2020 to 2021 was that year that we had our hybrid schedules. Some of our students were fully remote for the entire year. And as it relates to MCAS, we did have it, we did administer the MCAS exam, grades three through eight, and also high school, but it was only one session for each of the subject areas. And it was a randomized generator that determined which classes of students were going to be taking which sessions. And also for that year of note is that with the fully remote students who had chosen that as their mode of, of instruction for of instruction for that year, they also tested remotely. So we definitely had some interesting data in terms of students who tested in person, students who tested fully remote. And also, in addition to the hybrid schedule and multi-mode schedule of, of education, we did also have some programming changes that happened due to COVID. Uh, specifically as it would relate to MCAS scores, we had no additional writing course or that pre-algebra course in sixth grade. So a lot happened as it relates to the spring two thousand twenty-one data. Then we had last school year, which was two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, returned to normal um, in terms of our educational schedule. And then we did have a normal administration of the MCAS exam. So all sessions were given for math, science, and ELA. All standards were, were tested as they had previously been in two thousand nineteen. So that is where we have been. Um, when talking about, if we go to the next slide, when talking about the MCAS, I know that we've been giving the, the next generation assessment for math and ELA for a number of years now. For science, this is our second year. Um, but we just wanted to, again, frame the thinking in terms of what the scores and what the language looks like with that next generation test. So we no longer talk about advanced and proficient. Instead, we're talking about scores that are anywhere from four forty up to five sixty. And in terms of the performance levels, we have not meeting expectations, partially meeting, meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. So that's all the language that you're going to hear. All right, and we start with MCAS. All right, so we're gonna start with science. Um, so the top graph and the table on the um, right, are for tenth grade. So those are our scores. You can see the different colors. Um, the blue represents exceeding expectations. That's the best score. And then green is meeting expectations. The um, orangish is partially meeting, and then the red is not meeting. Um, and again, for science, we only have the twenty-twenty-two data because it was our shift over to the next generation test. So if we were to pull the twenty-nineteen, it was totally different ratings, a whole different beast. So I only have the twenty-twenty-two for you this year. And then down the road, we'll be able to compare. Um, but, so you can see the district next to the state. Um, and you can see we were above the state for the high school in both the exceeding and meeting. And then, as we would like to be, we were below the state in both the um, partially meeting and not meeting. Um, and you can see the percentages um, and on the right side. And then the bottom graph is for grades three through eight, again, for just science and tech engineering. So for science, it's a little different from the English and math. We only test in fifth grade and then in eighth grade. But the way the science test is set up, just as a reminder, um, the fifth grade assessment includes concepts and standards from grades three, four, and five. So anything from those three grades can be on that assessment. Same with eighth grade. It includes anything from sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade. So there's quite a bit of content um, that can potentially be on that test. But again, um, in the third through eighth, you can see that um, the district continues to um, to perform higher than the state um, on those as well. So within our conversations um, with the faculty, we're continuing conversations about filling gaps from the pandemic at times. Um, you know, when we went remote, things like that, it was hard to get all the labs in, things that, you know, kids would normally be getting. And so we've kept those conversations going from one level to the next to make sure we're aware of gaps that may have happened. If um, you know, we weren't quite able to get through all the units, we've kind of kept that conversation going. So we can fill in a little bit of that when the unit kind of spirals back around. Um, the high school test is different. This data is mostly from um, all of our students pretty much took biology. Um, occasionally, we have students take a different test if they've transferred in and done a different sequence in their other previous school. Um, or if they don't find success the first time around, sometimes they take a different test um, because you only have to pass one of the science tests. So you can take biology or physics. Um, right now, technically, um, upperclassmen can take chemistry or tech engineering, but those tests are being phased out and they haven't been updated in many, many, many years. So it's not a great match to the curriculum. So we try to avoid um, those tests for students. Um, we are running some tutoring at the high school um, to support students who may have transferred in, had some gaps um, or may just have struggled in the course. Um, and then we're hoping to look at implementing um, some more tech engineering standards in the middle school, which will help support our scores. Science. Great. Um, so looking at math, this slide is a little bit different than science. What you're looking at on the screen now are just the grade three through eight scores. And it's a comparison between two thousand twenty-two versus, again, two thousand nineteen. So kind of ignoring the anomaly of two thousand twenty-one, this is showing you sort of pre-pandemic and then where we are today. So if you just look at the top, focusing on two thousand twenty-two, and you're looking at the chart over on the right, you can see that for our district, and again, this is pushing all of the scores together for grades three through eight combined. We had seven percent of our, of our students in the exceeding expectations category, forty-five percent in the meeting category, thirty-nine percent partially meeting, and nine percent not meeting expectations. So that is really an overview of, of how our students did in elementary and middle school on math last year. When I compare those scores to two thousand nineteen, what we, what you would hopefully notice is that the difference between the, the percentages for the district and the percentages for the state remain relatively the same pre-pandemic and post-pandemic for math. The difference is we go down slightly in the exceeding expectations category, and we go up slightly in the not-meeting expectations category. Now, thinking about the MCAS exam, MCAS for spring of two thousand twenty-two did not change any of the standards that they were testing. So these are, especially for grades three through eight, those are end-of-grade level expectations. So we're looking at the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Any standard on those frameworks are fair game for the exam. And the state did not change what we were testing in spring of two thousand twenty-two. Internally, what we were doing, especially in a subject like math, where everything is building, you have a lot of prerequisite skills that you would need going into a new unit of study. Um, we were absolutely and have been teaching grade-level standards, but expanding the pacing for some of those critical areas to allow for the fact that we needed to spend some more time on the prerequisite skills. So if you're going into, say, a sixth-grade class and you're gonna start a sixth-grade math concept, the teachers knew that two years before, students hadn't actually finished the unit of study. The year before, some students were fully remote. Some were in our hybrid schedule, but significantly reduced time on learning. So we built that into the pacing. So we've been focusing, since the pandemic hit, we've been focusing a lot on our critical areas. When you look at the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, at the beginning of each of your units of study or um, grade-level standards, you'll see what the critical areas are. So we've spent the bulk of our time looking at those critical standards, which means there are some, for lack of a better term, less important standards that may have been missed, but were still tested on MCAS. So seeing the dip in exceeding and the increase in not-meeting, although not drastic, which we're very thankful for, we, I owe that a hundred percent to our teachers and all the hard work that they've done. Um, it's not surprising. So the good news story here is that, again, that difference between our percent district scores and the percent state scores have remained relatively the same for grades three through eight. If we wanna go to the next slide, this, thank you. Uh, this one right here is just focusing on grade-ten math. So grade-ten math exam is your requirement for high school graduation. Uh, knowing that it's a grade-ten exam, there are certainly a mix of geometry, Algebra I and Algebra II standards on there. So some of the material is coming from our ninth-grade curriculum, others is coming from our tenth-grade curriculum. Some of them dip back to, to eighth grade as well. Um, looking here, just focusing again on two thousand twenty-two, we had fourteen percent of our students exceeding, forty-six meeting, thirty-six partially meeting, and four not-meeting. Again, when we look at the comparison, we certainly have some changes from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, mainly when you're looking at the meeting and partially meeting category. So that's a breakdown that, even with the legacy test, we would talk a lot about how many students are advanced to proficient, right? That's the goal, those top two categories. In this scenario, how many are exceeding and meeting? And then how many are in that partially meeting category that with a little extra oomph, we can push into that meeting category? And I think it's those students that we're seeing sort of dipped from meeting down to the partially meeting. We have the same number in terms of not-meeting, um, only a minor dip in exceeding expectations. Like Dr. Clifford was talking about, at the high school level, we do have um, MCAS tutoring for math as well. So in our tutoring model, we're actually providing the services to students during their study halls. Um, so it is more of a response-to-intervention type model, but we're specifically focusing on the standards for MCAS. We did have that support last year. It continues this year. We're actually starting a second round of tutoring tomorrow. Um, and again, we, you know, we continue to have conversations about this data where we didn't focus a lot on the spring twenty-one data, just again, because we had some students testing remotely, um, some doing session one, which is without a calculator, some with a calculator for session two. We did not have a big emphasis on that data in our internal conversations with teachers. But we did do a much deeper dive this year, um, just from a curriculum analysis lens, to see what, how our students were doing.
I would just have a quick question.
Sure.
So what do they need to achieve in order to meet the graduation requirements?
Great question. You just can't be in the not-meeting expectations category.
And what about the kids that were in tenth grade during the pandemic? Not looking at those numbers, but?
Right. So we had a number of years where the competency determination from the state alleviated them from not having to pass MCAS. So we are back in the realm of our current tenth graders will definitely have to pass MCAS. Um, we're still running the retest as well. So the, the retest for math is always in November, another one in March. And then students can also take the May exam, even if they're not a tenth grader. So we did administer the retest exam to um, a number of students. I wanna say it was nine or ten. Um, could be transfer students, could be students who fell into that category of needing to pass it by graduation, but didn't pass it first time around. Um, so we did that in November. Scores come out in two weeks from now. And then depending on how students did, we'll run the retest, or the state runs the retest again in March. Um, and then if they have to go for another round, they would join our tenth graders in May.
Okay.
But it's really that four percent that you would be focused on.
Okay, and just for the younger grades? Just, did many people opt out for the younger grades?
That's a great question.
As a percentage of opting out, not?
I, I don't have it readily available.
I don't either. I don't.
There's a lot of number of kids or families that opted out.
It wouldn't have been any different than a different year.
Okay, it wasn't significant?
No.
Okay, that was my question. Has it changed as a result? Okay.
Question.
Were there any other questions, Ms. Tuffy?
So can you explain how the MCAS tutoring during studies works?
Mm-hmm. So we, depending on when the tutoring is happening, so the tutoring that happens leading up to that November retest and up to the March retest is very targeted in terms of, especially for students who had previously failed, so we're looking at the data, we're looking at the questions that they got wrong, and we're supporting them. The model is either one-to-one or one-to-two or three. Um, they're meeting with a tutor in a separate location to do test prep. So we're backfilling any skills that they need in terms of prerequisite skills to go, to be successful on that exam. But a lot of practice in, in reviewing questions, separating questions out by standard. So focus on standards and then doing full-length practice exams.
That targets the students who failed?
So?
Rather than the students uh, who are partially meeting expectations?
So, correct, especially as it leads up to the retest. In the spring, we swi, we shift slightly. So I had mentioned that we have a new round of tutoring starting tomorrow. So we're just building that schedule tomorrow. That will focus on trying to target students who are in danger of failing in May. So it could be, so as we go into the spring, we're actually targeting tenth-grade students who haven't yet taken the exam. And we take a number of, of um, things into consideration. We sometimes look at their middle school scores. We certainly look at how they're doing in their math class right now. It's teacher recommendation, um, guidance counselor recommendation to build that schedule. And that is trying to be preemptive.
And how are the numbers for that when you're, when you go to the category of partially meeting uh, expectations? You have eight or nine that, that were not meeting. How, how many people will you, how many students will you target in the spring?
We have thirty-six right now that we're hoping to target.
And will you have small groups uh? Um,
No more than four. We try not to have more than four um, in any of our sessions. We haven't fully built up the schedule yet. But again, it's usually one, two, three, or max four students that are in that session with the tutor.
Thank you.
A chance. Um, just wondering, you have targeted these students. Are you targeting specifically sophomores?
You are.
Yes.
For the second round.
Okay.
So it's, it's supporting the students who'll take that exam in May.
Okay, so once they get their scores at the end of freshman year, you would target them that, that, for that November, or no, after, heading into junior year?
So we don't have an exam freshman year. So when we're looking at the students that tutor in the fall, it's students who have transferred in and either never taken MCAS, because they might be coming from another country, another state, um, a private school, or students who had previously failed the tenth-grade exam. So the first round of tutoring is actually eleventh and twelfth-grade students. Then when we transition to the spring tutoring, that's our tenth-grade students, who we would look at their eighth-grade MCAS scores or their ninth-grade end-of-course score, or how they've done so far, terms one and term two, in the math class that they're in right now. Yes, thank you. A question.
Who's a chance? Um, thank you for this information. I think it shows that our scores have gone down. Um, is there any talk about getting math um, specialists and, and reading specialists and ELL specialists to help the kids? Because it's gonna take a few years, and it's fine to target a few kids. But overall, there's kids that can slip through the cracks. And um, it would be helpful to add that to our curriculum. And is that something that's being discussed in the department?
That's a great question, um, especially when you're focusing on the grades three through eight scores, where we don't necessarily, we certainly have students who are in that not-meeting expectations category. We wouldn't say that they've failed because those exams are not graduation requirements. So the conversation is certainly different at the elementary and middle school level. In terms of extra support for, as a math specialist, I know that we haven't done the ELA presentation yet, but a reading specialist, um, RTI specialist are certainly conversations that we have all the time. Um, you know, especially in leadership team meetings. This year, we've talked a lot about how are we supporting students? What can we do to get creative with student schedules? What can we get, do to get creative with teacher schedules? We would always say yes to more staff and more support. But yeah, I think that's part of our, that's part of our ongoing conversation all the time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
Hello.
Hello.
All right, so the um, that would wanna start without Mr. Gruffalo.
Let me just buy myself.
That's right. Uh, so the slide for the ELA MCAS is uh, pretty much the same as the math slide. Um, you have the two thousand twenty-two scores in relation to two thousand nineteen scores. As uh, Ms. Miller explained, it gave us two years of uh, you know, real MCAS scores, full-year MCAS scores. Um, in terms of the scores you see in front of you, uh, if you looked at the not-meeting expectations line, you can see that in two thousand twenty-two, the uh, number goes up to eleven, whereas in two thousand nineteen, it's at five. And so we usually look at it in relation to what's happening in the state uh, to give us a sense of, is this a curriculum issue? Is this kind of tends to be where we fall? And for the not-meeting expectations, it's fairly close in terms of the six, six points um, difference in two thousand twenty-two and um, six points difference in two thousand nineteen. So um, that's one thing to look at. The not-meeting expectations, it does always concern, I don't like to be in double digits there, but in relation to the state and uh, the impact of the pandemic on literacy, I think statewide, it's been pretty clear that it's had a pretty uh, dramatic effect on literacy. Uh, in terms of exceeding expectations, so the other end of that, you can see that two nineteen to two twenty-two, uh, we had a five-point difference between the district and the state in two thousand nineteen. That dropped to a single point. So that was kind of a, a bit of a concern, you know, that they're falling into the meeting expectations, partially meaning expectations category. Um, the difference between students exceeding, so then another variable we usually look at is, okay, if we look at the number of students exceeding and the number of students meeting combined, uh, what does that look like in terms of the state? So the difference between students exceeding combined with meeting when compared to uh, the state fell from a thirteen-point difference in two thousand nineteen to a ten-point, ten percent difference in uh, twenty twenty-two. So that is another thing that I would wanna look at further in terms of kind of going through this data. Um, so looking at those, the drop in three through eight, and it varies. So looking at those, the drop in three through eight, and it varies, I mean, we lumped three through eight together. So, you know, certain grades did better than other grades. But just in terms of kind of looking for potential reasons to explain some of the drops. The big one, of course, is we were in the middle of a literacy initiative at the elementary school when the pandemic hit. So we were in writer's workshop, pandemic hit, we went to, you know, remote hybrid instruction. We were focusing in on writer's workshop and what I can see in the data, looking at more of the details is that we had a falloff in writing scores. And I think part of the reason for that is when we're in a writer's workshop, where teachers are conferring with students one on one in the classroom, that didn't work so well when you got into a hybrid or remote scenario. In addition, it was harder to kind of do a workshop with building kids through the writing process, especially when we were in a remote scenario. The in 2021, 22 was also the year that we reduced our reading specialist from 11 down to seven at the elementary school. And we lost our two reading specialists at the middle school. So some of that intervention pieces were impacted. So what we did at the elementary level, given the the needs of early literacy is we really focused the attention of our reading specialists in each of the elementary school on that K through two group. So we didn't have as much intervention in the three through five group and we didn't have a literacy class in the middle school. Because we didn't have the reading specialist in the middle school in the year before, during the hybrid year, we had to kind of streamline what we were offering. So we didn't have the literacy course that year either. So it was kind of a two year scenario. In addition, in terms of the writing scores did drop at the middle school level too. And I think part of that is we we also reduced our writing from a seventh and eighth grade program down to an eighth grade program during that time. In terms of addressing the issues, next year we'll have fully implemented the literacy initiative. So there won't be any more being at different stages. I think that will tighten everything. In addition, the plan is to be running half cycle writing courses in grades five through seven. So that should also, the consistency of that year by year should also help there.
Sorry, can you repeat that last, what did you say with the last thing?
So running a half cycle writing classes in grades five through seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we're also looking into other ways to support students who need extra practice, looking at maybe some computer based assistance through different programs.
Did you, excuse me, did you just explain what you mean by half cycle writing?
So is so if students have classes on six days cycle, they would have, say, English six days, they would have writing three days. So it wouldn't be every day, but it'd be like an every other day sort of thing. And the next slide into the high school. And here you can see at the high school, the numbers in terms of the distance between 2019 and 22, we had a fairly, we had about a 5% drop in the number of students exceeding expectations, which wasn't that far off again from where the state was. But we had a significant increase in the number of students who were partially meeting expectations in 22. Some of the reasons, I think, for the drop of scores at the 10th grade, really, it was, it was a significant drop in writing scores in 10th grade. I think partly same sort of reason that we had in the three through eight, that it was hard to do writing instruction remotely. But also the 2021, 22 school year, I think was kind of a, you know, as Courtney was mentioning, in terms of math, it was kind of regaging where we are. There was not as much attention driven by MCAS testing and it was a lot of social emotional wellbeing. And I think looking at the data from the MCAS, one thing that was stood out to me is it looked like we needed to do a little bit more writing in terms of synthesis, looking at multiple sources of data and combining them, because that seemed to be an area where we fell short. In addition, the, there was little exposure to timed synthesis writing in the two previous years. And for the 10th grade in 2022, their last, the last time they had a writing course would have been in seventh grade. So there was a long gap of time for the current 11th grade class, last year's 10th grade class. Not that they weren't writing in their English classes, they they didn't have their traditional writing classes. In terms of action being taken, as with math and science, we have MCAS tutoring in ELA as well, and that will begin at the beginning of second semester. We're looking right now as a department into increasing exposure to synthesis writing and writing from sources in terms of, you know, research based writing. And in overall increase just in writing as assessment.
Okay, we're going to shift gears. I'm going to talk about SAT, ACT, and then some of the AP exam results. So I know it's been a couple of years since we've disseminated some of the SAT and ACT scores. And if you keep up with the news, you've probably heard a lot about SAT and ACT, both changes to them and change how they're perceived and used in college admissions. But they are still relevant. You know, obviously because of the pandemic, less SAT and ACT test takers since 2020. Slight decrease in the scores nationally. I'm going to show you a slide in a second with the national scores compared to ours as well. You've heard a lot probably about test optional and test blind admissions. That is something that the high, high majority of colleges, well, everybody implemented in 2020. Most colleges have continued that and have indicated they're going to continue with for at least the next couple of cycles, meaning when I say through the next few cycles, class of 2024, our current juniors and beyond. One of the few schools I can think of around here that has decided to go back to mandating the tests is MIT. But in the northeast part of the country, it's pretty much still optional. The SAT essay, which had already become optional a couple of years ago, has now been eliminated and the SAT subject tests have been eliminated. Now, that was probably expedited because of COVID, but it was going to happen anyway. And it was just, the writing was on the wall for that. The essay never really took. So those, you won't see any score results in SAT subject tests are gone completely. In spring of 2024, like the rest of the world, SAT is going virtual, computer based. I don't quite know exactly how that's going to work yet, but it's also going to be a shorter exam. The testing time is significantly shorter. So those are two major changes. So when we get to talking about results for class of 2025, we might have to scope it all differently. So I gave four year data here and, you know, kind of similar as my colleagues are talking about MCAS. 2020 is a slight anomaly. 2021, the reason we shaded it differently is because it's a real anomaly. But I did, at least you want to see it, especially so you can see the participation rate over in the left, the percent of the class that took the exam, because that greatly affects the scores. Okay? So your average scores, if you really want to look at them, we should be looking at 2019 and 2022. Braintree always scores pretty well above the national average. As you can see, in the state average, we usually score above that. The only one that we didn't is 2021. And as we just said, it's an anomaly. Main reason being, when you have that significant decrease in the number of students testing, you have to ask yourself, who are those students who aren't testing? And what would that have done to the scores? Now, in Braintree, just to give you an idea, participation rate in 2021, we see 65% of our class took it. In previous, it was 85, 88. We always hovered around that, let's say, 86 to 87, 88%. So we went down about 20% nationally that year. It was down 32%. And in the state, nationally, it was down 32% of test takers. By the state, because this is how they give the information, it was down over 35% of tests taken. Either way, we took disproportionate, we took more tests, if you think about it that way, where we only did 20% less. And because of that, if you look at our average scores, they're a little more consistent with the other years. Whereas the national average for that year is the highest it ever was, and the state average is pretty high. But again, with 65%, that's a higher proportion of our kids who took it. This past year, 79%. With the way SATs are going, my best guess, that's probably going to be where around we're going to land. I think the days of it being at 87, 88% are gone. But more importantly, our average scores from 2019 to 2022 are a difference of three points, which is insignificant when you're talking about 1130 to 1133. So that's just an overview of where we are with the SAT. Now, ACT, as you know, the American College Testing, if if some of you hear when I came to present the last time, we had an impetus to push more and more of our kids seven, eight, nine years ago to take the ACT as an option to SAT. Because if you can score well enough on that, maybe you score better on that test than the SAT and it benefited you. The reason there's no data up here is because in the last two years, because of COVID, obviously, there was a balance between how much tests we really wanted our kids to take in lieu of their, you know, social, emotional wellbeing and everything else they had going on. So we did a little reverse and we didn't push the ACT as much. Even if we did, it was a little harder for our kids to take it because there wasn't as many test centers to take the ACT. So whether we pushed it or not, wouldn't that number would have been down. The reason we didn't chose not to put any data, it's in the teens, the number of kids in the entire class who took the exam in the last two cycles, which means that data was just not, you know, valid at all to really present at this time. So I don't know exactly where we're going with it. I don't see us pushing the ACT as much as we were five, six years ago. But as you can see with SAT, even though they're test optional, there's still relevance. A lot of our kids, some of the ones sitting here and we're sitting over to my right earlier can definitely still benefit, which is why we put in the effort to it. But the kids, the number of times kids take it and the number of kids who take it probably is never going to go back to what it was in 2019. So that's a quick snapshot of SAT and ACT. Advanced placement, as you know, Braintree has a high, high number of kids who take AP exams. As you probably know, score ranges from one to five. One being the lowest, five being the top. Colleges, it really is up to each college. A lot of times you'll hear, well, a four or three or above can get you college credit. It can get you college credit, depending on the college you choose to go to and the subject. It's a lot safer if you get a four or five, depends on the school. Most of our state schools still take threes. Some schools, you could get a four or five, but that subject, they won't take it no matter what. So it really depends on where you're going. But bottom line is a lot of our kids can benefit from getting some college credit at the end of taking their AP exams. They take them at the end of the year in which they take the class. And as you heard, some kids that few saw freshman year, we've increased the number of kids sophomore year, but obviously junior and senior year is the most amount of kids that we have taken AP exams. So participation and results, a five year sequence. So if you can look at the total number of exams, you can see the total number of students. The bottom two, just to differentiate, the percent of students who received at least one three or above. The bottom category is a percent of all of our exams where there's a three or above. That first number should always be a little higher. Why in 2019 it's identical, I double checked to make sure I didn't put it downright. I think it's just, you know, an anomaly that happened. But you can see our total number of students. So one thing I want to mention, if you look at our total number of students, now you can see it was increasing, increasing, increasing. Last year it went down slightly. But that is, again, our kids had enough on our plate, probably more kids chose to drop classes throughout the year than they normally would have. Already, if I project for this year, our total number of students is actually going to be closer to 380s. So it's probably going to be the highest number that we've ever offered. We're projected to give about 770 exams this coming spring. So that, those numbers were trending up, took a little down last year for all those reasons, and they were the right reasons. You know, last year was not the year, and some of these students can speak better to it than I than I can, that maybe instead of taking two APs, you only took one, or instead of three, you only took two. So that's why there's a slight drop in that number. But if you look at the percent of our students earning a three or above, it's always in that mid to high 80% range. This past year, 86%. But down below, if you want to compare it to some US numbers, the national numbers, this is where we really stand out. And it's pretty consistent over the five years. 2021 is the anomaly. 2020 kind of is too. Now, I want to highlight one thing in 2020. 2020, that's the pandemic year. College Board somehow shifted and allowed all exams to be taken remotely at home. How they trusted you guys not to cheat, I don't know, but they did and all the scores were. What's that? Yeah, I just. You know, just so you know, where you notice down below and you notice the US number, the percent of exams getting three or above. Look at most years, we're in the 84, 85%. The US numbers are in the 59. I mean, that's a significant difference in how well we're scoring on these exams. In 2020, if you notice the US number, 64%, ours is 82.9. This goes to what I was saying about the SATs. The, our regional rep from College Board called me because remember, these kids were at home and we encouraged them all to take the exam. We had no say in the, they didn't choose to get online at 5:00 PM on that exam date. We had no way. It's not like they were in school, right? This woman emailed me to say, because the number of our kids, the percent, it was in like the 95% range of our kids who were signed up to take the exam and took it. I know that wasn't the case nationally, which is one of the reasons the national number that year was increased. There's a lot of kids who maybe thought they weren't going to do that well, chose not to take it. That increases the the scores. So even that year, where maybe it was down a little, you can see what I'm saying, how well we did nationally. Not available in 2022, College Board has not yet. We have numbers per exam, which I'll show you on the next slide, but their overall data report usually comes out in like March of, so pretty soon. But that's why that number is not there. As you can see from the other non-COVID years, it's always in that 60% range and we were at 83.7 for the total number of threes or above. The next two slides, and I'm not going to, these are big slides, these on the left, all are our exams. And actually, you know what, Mr. Lee, I'm sorry, could you go back one slide? Because you even told me to highlight this and I purposely forgot. Sorry. One impetus we have, and this goes back to when Mr. Lee was principal, is you always talk about the scores, but the number of kids who were exposing to higher, more rigorous coursework, in this case, AP work. If we look at this number, you'd say, oh, well, 345, we're up to the 360s. We haven't made a huge jump. If we went back one year to 2017, that number was 300 students. If we went back five more years to 2013, which is nine years from today, it was 236 students. That is a significant increase in the number of students who are taking AP exams. So I think that's really worth noting. And if you're increasing the number of exams, but your scores are still at that high level, that speaks a lot to obviously what the teachers are doing in the classroom, the efforts the students are making. And again, as I said, this year, I think we're going to hover closer in that 375, 380 students who are taking it. So so the next two slides in this, like I said, I'm not going to break it down. This is five year averages for our 19 or 20 or 19 AP exams. Gives you the number of exams each year, the average score for our students on that exam. And in the 2022 column, I put the national average. On the national average, unless the exam changes, and what I mean by that is if, you know, they change the the curriculum or the syllabus for a class or the units that are covered, the exam scores nationally don't change dramatically too much each year. So when you see the 2022, that's pretty encompasses pretty much what you would have seen if we looked at 2019, 20. Again, I won't, this is a big slide. There are 19 exams up here. We are above, and in many cases significantly above the national average score in 18 of the 19 exams. And the only one we're not, we're down by point 05, which is obviously insignificant. But if you look at some of these numbers, you know, if I look at, you know, the one on the bottom, an average of 4.56, the national average is 2.70. I mean, that's, that's even far and above the difference on our SAT scores to what the national average is. So this just speaks to that previous slide, the numbers three and above, but the number of our kids who are actually getting fours and fives, because you can't get these averages with just threes, right? So a lot of these fours and fives. And if you look at the next slide, and again, I don't want to read each of these. I know you have the material. It's the same thing. If you look at those two far right columns with the BHS average in blue and the national average over on the right. You know, loads me away when I look at like the calculus scores on the previous slide, English Lit, English Language, we're significantly above where the national average is. where the national average is. So that is a little about AP scores.
Any questions on ACTs or APs? I'm forever grateful for Braintree Public Schools for my kids' AP exams, because they saved me a ton of money in, uh, in college tuition. So I would encourage all students to take these exams and just also note that the Hollis Fund, which we have recently reviewed the Hollis Fund, where the Hollis Fund pays for AP exams for all students to take, so three hundred and eighty exams, it sounds like next year.
Three hundred and eighty students, closer to our seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-five exams.
I think ninety to a hundred dollars an exam. So that's significant, that's a significant amount of money that we're.
Yeah, you get, it's ninety-six dollars minus the eight-dollar rebate, so it cuts like to eighty-eight dollars an exam. Yeah.
So that's significant. These are very impressive. I mean, very impressive, the, the AP exams.
And to Mr. Garofalo's point, because it has been a conscious effort over time, is to get more kids to take them. What's truly impressive is that the scores haven't changed.
Yes.
You know, so to have students be able to go into an environment where the rigor is certainly there, it's preparing them for what they're almost inevitably going to do after graduation, and still see this level of performance is testimony to our teachers and a continued effort to get the numbers even higher. You know, every once in a while, you guys hear from constituents who have concerns about where we rank and whether it's US News and World Report or Boston Magazine. AP participation is one of the biggest drivers in all of those rankings. Not performance, participation, meaning how many kids took an AP exam. And I wouldn't chase it for that reason. I would chase it, however, for the experience that kids get when they get into a course like this, surrounded by students who are looking to do their best in it, and just experience that, that level of educational gymnastics that it takes to be successful.
The rigor, the rigor alone, yes. Any other questions? I'm just, it's very interesting to me how the SATs were, you know, years ago, everybody took the SATs, and then there was the, the shift to ACTs, and now we're back to SATs, and and the essay is, it, it was, it was a choice where they had this, the essay, now the essay is gone. Just how much these have morphed over the last few years.
And it will continue to, just because of, you know, depending on what colleges choose to do with it. So College Board knows if they want to still charge kids fifty-five dollars for an exam, they better get it more in line with what's expected. And so, you know, you'll see more changes.
Ever changing, it's hard to keep up with.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you all for your work, obviously.
To the chair, sorry. I, I think, you know, just a comment, I, I know that, you know, the kids that take the AP, the really kids that do rigorous test courses and so forth will always do well in Braintree. I think also the kids that need special needs will always do well in Braintree. I think it's the middle of the kids that I'm thinking that really need the support. It's great, and I think that's great, but most of our kids are in the middle, and what I'd like to see is more support for those kids to be successful, because if we're going to actually force kids to take high standardized testing, and we need to give them the support to make them successful. And that's my two cents. So thank you.
Any other questions, by anybody? Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you all for your presentations. Thank you. Do we have these slides in our packets?
Miss Tuffy does. I'll send them to.
Can I also?
You do, I sent them to.
Just emailed it to you.
Miss Tuffy.
Okay.
All right. All right, moving to the right slide.
Continuing administrative updates, Mr. Lee.
A little bit truly, I'm getting there.
That's okay.
First thing you got.
Yep.
Just a couple of administrative updates as we move forward. As you may know, we opened kindergarten registration last week. Just to give you a sense of where we stand after a very short period of time, currently, we already have a hundred and fifty-four registrants for a full-day kindergarten. Seven and a half-day kindergarten registrations for a total of a hundred and sixty-one kids registered already. I believe, you know, given the numbers and given the trend, at this point, we'd be looking probably around a total a little over three hundred for next year, but we'll continue to track those numbers. But registration is open. We are collecting all the necessary paperwork from families, and on an ongoing basis, I'll update you on what those numbers are as we continue.
I know it's a moving topic, but is there a deadline that you've given people to register, or a suggested deadline?
The suggested deadline.
Twenty is the first deadline.
We've got a waitlist as needed. We've been relatively successful in the last couple of years of being able to have all people who wanted full-day kindergarten get into a full-day kindergarten session. I can think, I think we were over, I want to tell you, ninety percent of our families took part in full-day kindergarten this year. So the percentage of half-day continues to dwindle.
To the chair. I just think that that's amazing, because not that long ago, you know, the, the narrative was nobody wanted full-day kindergarten. And obviously, that was, that was not true. And, and, and another quick question, with the task force's recommendations and so forth, and the kindergarten, will that change anything? If, if South is repurposed, will there be more room? Will there be a less waiting list? Will there be more availability?
Directly, there's more availability. The reality is, we haven't needed the availability, because we've been able to allow everybody who wanted full-day kindergarten in. Now, it's, it's early in the game. I don't know the, where the exact numbers will land. But the trend in Braintree is the trend across the state, that half-day is a very small percentage of statewide kindergarten classes. The vast majority of families are opting into full-day kindergarten across the board, and they're, you know, as that population gets smaller, we're only running three sections of half-day this year. So.
Right, right. And it would be great to see free full-day kindergarten in Braintree.
It wouldn't, and we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you. Any other questions, sir? Kindergarten?
The only other administrative update is just to piggyback on what Miss Problemair just mentioned. At our next meeting on the twenty-third, we intend to have representatives from task force come and present any recommendations that they have to the school committee. From that point, the school committee can take whatever actions they see fit in terms of moving forward. As you all know, and that, which I hope has been clearly expressed at this point, the task force has no decision-making capability. Its job was to take a look at what the options might be and to present to this body what it found to be the best, if any, alternatives as we look at both the budget and equity with, among the districts. So that'll be on the twenty-third, and that, at that point, we'll go over to the school committee's purview.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to, from the school committee, student representative updates. My favorite part.
First off, I hope everyone had a great holiday season, a great start to the new year. At the high school, a lot of clubs and organizations are just starting to bring back their meetings in the new year, and they're getting set in their new initiatives. Just before break, Student Council, other organizations with the school, distributed our resources for Adopt a Family, which I updated you about at our last meeting in December. I'm glad to see we're able to help around fifteen families, I believe, raising over eight thousand dollars through all of the donations from our many contributors, which are very, very helpful for all of them. And that's a great program to ensure that all families, no matter their financial situation, are able to enjoy the holidays, and we're happy to give back. And now in the new year, Student Council will be working with a variety of other initiatives as we move into the coming months that I look forward to updating you about, and a great number of other clubs are working on their programs for the new year, which are other representatives, I believe, are going to tell you.
One interesting thing that's happening tomorrow, I believe, is the Girls Empowerment Movement, or the Gem Club, is having a guest speaker come during their session tomorrow, so that should be a good opportunity for more community involvement in that way. And then, speaking sort of related to Student Council, the junior class, Class of twenty twenty-four, recently had a merchandise sale where we sold like hoodies, sweatshirts, and long sleeves, and I think we did get a lot of people to buy those just right after the holidays. So that's a good source of income for us, especially because prom's coming up, and we're already talking about themes, it's a whole thing. There's also a new STEM research club. One of my classmates, Sarah Hammam, has recently started this up with one of the science teachers and a couple of classmates, so this should be a good opportunity to get some student research out there, and possibly, from what I've heard from her, be presented in, you know, bigger, larger community organizations. So to be correct.
Other than mirroring what Will said about, you know, welcome, welcoming everyone to the new year, I guess I'd like to finish off with an update about Blackout Braintree, which I spoke about at the last meeting. I'd like to preface it with a personal thank you to Mr. Hanson for beginning the media presence for that event. It was extremely helpful. Your article.
Seventy-seven hundred hits on the website, which is unusually high.
Excellent.
Wow. But that, that, that article really boosted it to.
Presentation at the town council meeting as well, yeah.
More than a local level, it got onto the several news stations.
Excellent.
And it was a phenomenal event. I'm so excited to get planning for it next year as well. It'll happen around the same time, and it's going to be even better, because hopefully, I'll have the smarts to talk to the rec department about getting the lights turned off.
Make it a fundraiser, make it a fundraiser, yeah. I shut all my lights off, just so you know.
Thank you very much.
Wasn't, I didn't feel well, so I didn't join, but I shut all my lights off, and I sat on my back patio and, and watched the show. So.
See anything?
I did.
Awesome. Of the year.
So thank you for sharing that.
So I think as a little thing, we have a lot of clubs that are having a lot of plans for the new year. I think specifically, we had the Diversity Council is from one of our guidance counselors, Ms. Banzal. So we're trying to get a lot of students trained, so I think a forum ran out during break to get peer leaders, so that we can train students and members from the Anti-Dedication League are going to come over to the school during three school days, and they're going to train students about bias, discrimination, and a lot of the events that happen at school. And Ms. Banzal was saying, there's a lot of kids who signed up to become peer leaders, to train their classmates, just super exciting, because the Diversity Council really wants to expand its mission towards like the whole town. So we're going to be having those trainings in school in the next couple of days. I think we have a few this week, and then some next week. So we're really looking forward for those kids to get trained, and then train other students, like their classmates and their friends, about what they learn, and have like a whole, like, group meeting. And then I also, the ASA Club, the Asian Student Association, they're really excited for their meeting. This Sunday, we have our Lunar New Year Festival, so I and the other members, including May, who was here earlier, they really did a great job organizing the whole thing. We've been working with one of the towns members, Justine, and she's been coming over to the school a couple of days after school and giving us posters, flyers, and ASA will be having their own, like, fundraising table, so we're hoping a lot of people come by. For the first time, we're having like a grand celebration for Lunar New Year, so a lot of people are exciting and looking forward to getting more participation and hoping it's like a thing that continues for the years to come.
Awesome. So great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Policy and Education Subcommittee, Ms. Tuffy.
Thank you. So the Policy and Education Subcommittee met fifteen. We discussed a number of we continued looking at Section B of Mass Association of School Committee policies. So that's, we have, we had several updates that we'd like to present for first reading tonight. One was policy BDFA, which is on school councils, and BDFA slash E, which is on school improvement plan and submission of an approval of school improvement plan. So in two thousand twenty-two, the Mass Association of School Committees updated and consolidated these policies. BDFA E had three parts to it. E one, the school improvement plan, and E two, submission and improved approval of school improvement plans all got put into one policy, BDFA slash E, and that was in your packet for our first, first reading. That that was outlined how school improvement plans are to be written and submitted. EDFA was on school councils, and we'll, we'll, we'll get to that at our next, next committee meeting. So would like you to review BDFA slash E. And when this is the first reading, and then on the twenty-third, the vote will be to replace the Braintree policy, BDFA E one, with the two thousand twenty-two consolidation and update. On the twenty-third, we'll do a first reading of BDFA, which consolidates the current policy on school councils and includes E three, which is on debt of the school council. So this kind of, kind of technical policies of their different MASC, but they've just sort of shifted them around and consolidate them, so they'd be more clear. So I'd ask that people review the, pack them from your packet, and then we'll vote on them at our next meetings. Secondly, we had mentioned that at the MASC annual meeting, school committees send delegates and vote on the resolutions, which we didn't have, have a policy for that. So if you look at policy, BDFA, School Committee Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops, that, that gives you guidelines for allocating for attending conferences that provide in-service training for members, especially well, for new members and for all members, really, to keep you up to date with policy. That is straight out of the MASC recommendations. BK, which is also a first reading, is on school committee membership. So this I would like to, I would like to, us to consider a, an addition to that policy. So it reads that school committees will take an active part in the activities of these groups. So I would like to, under paragraph one on BK, the committee will review and vote on resolutions proposed by member districts for consideration at the annual meeting of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So we were sent in September a list of, of resolutions that had been decided on. We did not vote on as a committee, so I think in the future that we will. Mr. Lee mentioned putting it on the agenda at the September meeting. And then, part two, the committee will appoint a voting delegate and an alternate delegate to represent Braintree schools at the MASC Delegate Assembly. So in two thousand twenty-two, the delegate form is submitted by October seventeenth. You don't need to pay a fee to attend that delegate assembly if you're not going to the full conference. So I would like to see Braintree have some representation when at, at that delegate assembly in, at future meetings.
Can I ask you a question? So for the, the resolutions, the vote on the resolutions, I know the MASC sent a number of resolutions. Do you have to be at this delegate assembly in order to vote?
Yeah.
You have to be present.
And you have to, so you have to Braintree can only have one delegate. We're a member of District Three, the Southeast District. So each school has one voting delegate, and you can also include an alternate in case that person. And you can also include an alternate in case that person. So.
So I don't have that information on this, was that not shared as part of this? So is this something you're taking up?
Something that was.
You'll take up.
I would, I would, I would like add to BK, because the reason that we're looking at this is because I watched another school committee meeting in, in October, and they went through the process where they voted on those resolutions. Then they had, they, they elected a delegate to send to MASC to represent them in the, in the vote.
Yes.
So.
Has, has the Policy and Education taken this up and voted to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay.
With, without the policy, it can still be added to the agenda in September. We've already tentatively put it on the September agenda.
Right, but I, I think it, I personally, I think it needs to be written down, because we were not aware of it. And
When you say written down as part of the policy?
It's part of our policy.
Again, policy, you voted on it as a committee to do that? Okay, just, it's not in this?
Yeah.
What we get in our packets, I guess.
Right.
What you're, what you're describing, I, I haven't seen, is the first draft, isn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't it, okay.
Okay, so those are the, those policies on BDFA slash E, BIBA and BK were for first reading. And then we have a second reading, we have policy JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children, which was presented at the last school committee meeting. That outlines the responsibility of sending districts regarding records and receiving districts regarding placement, enrollment, graduation, and provision of special services to students from military families. So.
I'd like to present a motion to accept these policies.
Okay, and is your second?
I'm sorry, are we voting on both of them or just?
We're voting on JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children. This is the second reading.
Just the first one. Educational opportunities for military children, you making a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Cobble Mayor and a second by Ms. Sarris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
And then I'd like to make a motion to accept policy JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Children in foster care.
And I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Cobble Mayor, second by Ms. Sarris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And these are pretty much boilerplate, and there are already things that were following.
Part of the law.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
We have second reading on the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept this the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar draft, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I have a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar. I just have one question, has anything changed on this since the last time we looked at it, the draft of October twenty-fourth?
No.
I have a motion on the table by Ms. Cobble Mayor.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sarris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all, Policy and Education Subcommittee for all your work. Thank you, Ms. Tuffy, for your report. Okay, moving on.
Were we going with the the clubs?
Consideration of second reading and approval of the student activity accounts?
That's not.
That was, that was finance and operations.
Oh, that was?
Yeah. Which we voted at our last meeting.
Moving forward, it is second reading of this particular document. Again, this simply approved the use of student activity accounts. As you screw for these money, there was a request from another school committee member, additional information, which you will find on the sheet. That answers the question as to why they might need to use it. But the intent remains the same, these are groups that may use the student activity account, and this body needs to use that.
Will we move the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three student activity accounts?
I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy and a second by Ms. Cobble Mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Just FYI, our next finance and operations meeting will be at six o'clock on January nineteenth. We will begin to talk about the FY twenty-four budget. And it will go hand in hand with our task force's agenda. The clock on the nineteenth of January, yeah.
Under the chair, the next Policy and Education Subcommittee meeting will be on, it's scheduled for January twelfth at five P M. That's still.
Still on.
Still, do you prefer to keep it the twelfth, or would you prefer it to be the nineteenth?
I, I prefer to keep drawing the twelfth.
Yeah, that's fine.
He has an objection.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we have come to the end of our agenda.
Indeed.
So I will ask for a motion. Oh, again, our next meeting is on January twenty-third.
So move.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
Ms. Sarris.
Aye.
Ms. Cobble Mayor.
Aye.
And the chair will tag, we have adjourned.